Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call the meeting to order. Did I find my agenda? There we are. If you'd rise and join me in the singing of Oh, Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to take the poll, please.
Counselor Mackey.
Present.
Counselor McKay. So McKay does not appear to be online yet. Counselor Carlton. Counselor Pringle.
Present.
Counselor McQueen. Counselor Nielsen. Counselor Patterson. Counselor Dickert. Counselor Kentner. Counselor Keveney. Counselor Body. Counselor Greg. Warden Millen.
Present.
Counselor Dobreen.
Present.
Counselor Matrasovs. Counselor Boardingill. Counselor Echols. Counselor Hutchinson.
Present.
We have all members in attendance with the exception of Counselor McKay.
Thank you, Tara. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge with respect the history, spirituality, and culture of the Anishnabe, Six Nations of the Grand River, Haudenosaunee, the Wendat, Waindot, Waindot peoples, on whose traditional territories we gather and whose ancestors signed treaties with our ancestors. We recognize also the Métis and the Inuit, whose ancestors shared this land and these waters. May we all, as treaty people, live with respect on this land and live in peace and friendship with all its diverse peoples. Is there any declaration of interest regarding any item on the agenda this morning? Seeing none, if one should arise during the course of the meeting, you can make us aware of it at that time. So the first order of business is the adoption of minutes. The first one is the council and committee of the whole minutes dated February 23rd. Would someone care to move Counselor Dobreen, Counselor Hutchinson? Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. The next is the Long Term Care Redevelopment Planning Task Force Meeting Minutes dated February 21st. Someone care to move those minutes, please? Counselor Mackey, Counselor Carlton? Almost. Any discussion on those minutes? Counselor Echols?
Uh, thank you. Further on, I just. What's the difference, I see, further on in the minutes that we, uh, Counselor Carlton was put in as the vice chair of, but it's separate? And in these minutes, we've got the chair and the vice chair in the minutes. There's someplace in here that, you know, that we pass a motion that Ms. Carlton, and I just wondered what that was for? Or am I imagining something here somewhere along the line?
Well, I don't know whether you're imagining anything, but I, at the moment, have no idea what you're talking about. So I'm thinking, I'm inclined to think that you're imagining something.
It was Counselor Keveney be nominated as vice chair of the C O Performance Evaluation Committee. But that was in the minutes of the. I, I just.
Just, uh, if, if I could bring your attention to the fact that we're dealing with the Long Term Care Redevelopment Planning Task Four Minutes, the C A O Performance Evaluation Committee is next.
So the chair and the vice chair were nominated for both of those. But it goes through the minutes. But in the C O, one, the warden is automatic and chair, and Ms. Keveney is the vice chair. Why did we need, why do we need a resolution that that be endorsed? Or should we be doing that with the endorsement of the Redevelopment Committee Minutes? That's why I'm bringing it forward right now.
I'll ask the clerk to comment.
Sorry, Counselor Echols, I'm not sure I, um, understand fully the question, but the, the resolution to have Counselor Keveney nominated as vice chair was, um, captured in this draft resolution for the C O Performance Evaluation Committee Minutes. And then the warden, there was no resolution because, as you note, um, the warden is the, the chair by default.
Okay. So the tone has been set for the meeting today. Very good. Any other discussion on those minutes? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Moving on to the C A O Performance Evaluation Committee Meeting Minutes dated February 23rd. Would someone care to move those? Counselor Keveney and Counselor Nielsen? Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Uh, we have no closed meeting matters. There are no reports, no bylaws. News and celebrations. Anyone have anything to, uh? Counselor Greg.
Thanks, Warden Mill. I'd just like to point out for council's benefit, uh, within the February e-blast, there was correspondence from the past warden Bellamy, uh, family, uh, just regarding his passing, and I just certainly want to make sure that all council takes a moment to go back into, uh, that correspondence to read that card of thanks and appreciation, uh, for the respect that the honor guard, uh, demonstrated at the funeral. So I think that's important that all council just finds that in the February e-blast, that thank you card.
Actually, thank you, Counselor Greg. Any others? Counselor Matrasovs.
Thank you, Warden Mill. I just wanted to report on a follow-up that yesterday was International Women's Day. We had a fantastic event. But I, I, I want to say it wasn't just in the Blue Mountains, the town of Blue Mountains, because our key speaker, uh, was a Ukrainian, uh, mother who has come over here with three of her children and has actually, uh, through the generosity of the community of the, the Owen Sound Ukrainian Village, uh, community group, has been able to establish herself right here in Owen Sound. And it really resonated that that was, that was a, uh, a, a moment of building community for the new people that are coming into our whole county. So I think that's a celebration that we should all consider, and I encourage everyone to follow up. There is a CBC article, uh, CBC interview where you can listen to her speak directly. She's now getting into an enterprise. She's an engineer by background, but now she's, she's, uh, pivoting to, to find her calling and, uh, and will be establishing herself firmly here within the community of Owen Sound. So I think, uh, it was a wonderful opportunity for us to see that beyond our municipal borders.
Thank you, Counselor Matrasovs, and it does confirm the, uh, the generosity and the, uh, support of our, of our community. And it also speaks to the resiliency of folks from around the world when they seek, uh, opportunities. Any other news? Okay, not seeing any. I'll take a motion to adjourn the council meeting. Oh. Oh, Savannah. Sorry, go ahead, Savannah. My apologies.
Sorry about that. I just didn't want to miss the opportunity, uh, to congratulate the thirty-six PSWs that graduated on March 2nd from the program that we partnered with Georgian College and Y M C Employment Services, all nineteen long-term care homes in Gray and Bruce. So Jen and I were fortunate enough to attend that celebration and one hundred percent employment of every single graduate that walked across that stage is now a P S W in Gray and Bruce. So a huge congratulations to that group and that program.
Thank you, Savannah, and that is indeed a very good, uh, point to celebrate. Absolutely. Anyone else? All right. A motion to adjourn would be in order. Counselor Patterson, Counselor Dickert. All those in favor? That is carried. We'll now move over to our committee of the whole meeting. I will bring that to order. Is there any declaration of interest? For any item on that agenda? Not seeing any? Any business? Well, there are no businesses arising. Delegations. Our delegation is here. I see them. Are you folks ready to? Yep. Okay, what we're, I'm hearing from the clerk is that in case somebody wants to tune in, because you were booked for ten thirty, we'll just hold off on that till, for a few minutes. We'll maybe do a couple, uh, we'll do the consent agenda. Someone care to move? Or does anyone want any of those items removed, first of all? Counselor Greg?
Thank you, Warden Mill. And I would like, uh, the first item, six A, the AMO homelessness resolution to be removed for, uh, further discussion.
Okay, that'll be noted. Any others? Okay, I'd take a motion to Counselor McQueen to adopt all these as presented with saving except, uh, number A. Counselor, uh, Boardingill. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Maybe. Yeah, maybe we'll do that right now if you're prepared. Counselor Greg? I need a motion to accept it first. Or to receive it. Counselor McKay, Mackey, Mackey, right off the hop. Oh. Man. I know, I know, I know, I know. There you go. Counselor Mackey. Counselor Nielsen will second it. Counselor Greg, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Warden Mill. And this might be the only thing I speak to then today, but, uh, I find this AMO homelessness resolution, while incredibly important, uh, that we find solutions, uh, for the issues that's within every one of our communities, I find the, the tone of the resolution incredibly simplistic. To describe it as the result of the under-investment and poor policy choices of successive provincial governments would indicate to me that they've borne this resolution out of complete ignorance to the fact that this problem exists far beyond Ontario borders, beyond Canadian borders. It plagues every state, every city in the United States. And to just ask our province to be the only, uh, stakeholder in resolving the problem, I think is, uh, not correctly identifying other contributors to the problem. Uh, one of those contributors is federal government policy, which, uh, is indicated a couple of days ago in the paper. Uh, for anyone that, uh, read the issues or the items that are coming out of Niagara Falls, uh, with the amount of hotel rooms that are being, um, provided and actually stated that, uh, individuals, uh, that were homeless were being removed from those hotel rooms, uh, so that, um, refugees, uh, from the Roxham border crossing, I think, that who are being bused to Niagara Falls. It went from sixty-seven hotel rooms, uh, which they were billing the federal government for to five thousand rooms, I think was the number the Mayor Diodati, uh, referenced, and, uh, initially it was described as keeping it under the table and, and not being transparent. I think anytime government tries to keep something underneath the table and not be transparent is probably indicating the government's on the wrong track. Uh, but this is certainly a problem here that requires federal government assistance. Their policy clearly plays a role and contributes to the problems that we're all seeing in our communities. To just ask the province for a solution, I don't think is sufficient, and I wish AMO would have worked a little more diligently, and, uh, a little more passionately and pursued, um, a resolution that also had the federal government contributing both financially and through policy and uh, support to the provinces and the lower-tier municipalities is finding a res- a, a solution to this problem. So I think the resolution should be amended so that there is a catchment of the role the federal government should be playing in pursuing, um, this problem.
Kim?
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Um, thank you, Counselor Greg. Um, I'm going to make a suggestion that, um, normally, uh, the negotiations and conversations between, um, different levels of government are the purview of intergovernmental affairs. And, um, one of the things that could happen with this resolution is that a copy of the motion, in addition to the ministries, um, listed here, could also, um, be, um, expanded to include intergovernmental affairs, um, for the attention of the federal government. If that would at least go some way towards, um.
Counselor Greg, would you be amenable to something of that nature, or would you propose a different amendment?
I think councils should be a little bit more forthright in the direction that's within the motion. Um, it might display itself in the public realm to be a little bit more accurate, um, in identifying the players as opposed to, I understand the intergovernmental, the back and forth, but just the resolution as it's demonstrated here just seems to lay everything at the province. And we will know nothing about what type of negotiations are ongoing between the province and federal government. And, um, I think there is a role that we should be advocating for, that the public sees that the federal government is indeed playing a role here and contributing meaningfully and not just, uh, in back rooms where we're trying to negotiate, uh, support. But so I think it should be included actually in the, in the motion. I'm, I'm disappointed that AMO, um, didn't actually incorporate better language and to look for support from the federal government to begin with.
So in follow-up, where item C, um, the County of Gray calls on the provincial government to urgently work with AMO and a broad range of stakeholders, um, we're also asking the provincial government to work with the federal government. Then do you want it to be that explicit to work with the federal government to seek, um, support and for resolutions?
That would be close to what I have wrote, wrote down. The motion should also include the role which the federal government should work with and financially support municipalities on homelessness. That is the proper place to, to place it. I think so. That would be the amendment that I would move, uh, so that we include that in the motion. Uh, they're, they're the ones with the deepest pocketbooks. So they should be, um, at the table as, as a player.
Okay, so I have an amendment to the motion. Does someone care to second it? Counselor Body? Okay, any discussion on the amendment itself? Would, uh, did the clerk, uh, Sarah, have you captured it or maybe it's on screen? You're just working on it? So the gist of, just of the amendment is that we're asking the province to work with the feds to acknowledge the problem and, and, you know, bring solutions forward or propose solutions. Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Good morning, everyone. I agree with, uh, the comments made by Counselor Greg. I'm just wondering, in the resolution that's before us right now, it has therefore be it resolved that the council of the County of Gray calls on the provincial government to urgency and then the three, uh, if we just had provincial government and the federal government, um, to urgent, urgently, that would cover off everything, I think, that I've heard. We're just asking that the two levels of government, you know, work together to end acknowledged homelessness in Ontario is a social, economic, health crisis committed to ending homelessness in Ontario. That would simplify things if you just add that the federal government in there would be my submission. Thank you.
Okay. And I think what the clerk's department has here is essentially what you're saying with, yeah. Any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, oh. Got it up. Counselor Dobreen.
I have no question. I just like a pause to see the actual amendment on the screen.
Yep, we do that. Well, I, I'll, I'll read the amendment once it's, uh, when it's, once it's fully crafted. I know. You see, it's true that, uh, meetings hate a void, so I know, I knew that we'd fill the time before ten thirty when our delegations were scheduled, so. How we doing, Sarah? Up there. So, uh, the amendment is, if you'll allow me to read it while I'm kind of turned here. Oh, there it is. The motion be, that the motion be amended to ask the provincial government to work with the federal government to financially support the homelessness issue. Counselor Greg, does that catch your amendment? Yes, it does. Excellent. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the amendment? Counselor Dobreen.
Thank you, Warden Mill. Uh, was it not, and through you to Counselor Greg, was it not to also for the federal government to acknowledge the issue and that it has, you know, it's part and parcel to their policy as well? And this is just asking for financial support.
Well, with all due respect to the mover, I'll ask it once again if that captures what the amendment was. Or if you're satisfied with the amendment.
I think if that amendment is, is located right prior to then subsequently saying to urgently A, B, and C, then it's, it is asking the federal government to indicate their role or to accept their role in it. So I'm okay with where it is.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Okay, oh, Counselor Mack.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And Madam Clerk, can you just scroll down to the actual resolution, please? Or sorry, up. Yeah, so if we add in federal government, provincial and federal government to urgency, if we add that in there, that accommodates everything, I think, we're looking for, does it not? I don't know if that's an amendment.
Well, I, I'm, I'm, I have an amendment on the floor currently, and the mover of that amendment is satisfied with what's on the screen, so I'm, if somebody wishes to make a further amendment to the amendment, I'd be open to that. Counselor Mack.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I will move that in the body of the resolution that we add that, uh, the County of, uh, the council of the County of Gray calls on the provincial government, provincial and federal government to urgency urgently, and then A, B, and C, just is all we would need to add.
So. So I, I. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking what's happening here is you, you're back to amending the original motion. But the amendment as proposed by Counselor Greg, which is what's on the floor currently, so unless you wish to amend his amendment, I'm going to ask you to wait until this amendment either passes or fails before I take your amendment, Counselor Mack. Okay? Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor? That is carried. Counselor Mackey, do you wish to make a further amendment?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Yes, I would like to further amend the motion to add that, uh, therefore be it resolved that the council of the County of Gray calls on the provincial and federal government to urgently.
Okay. Is there a second here for that amendment? Counselor Nielsen, discussion on the amendment? All those in favor? That is carried. Very good. So now we're back to the amended motion. Or the original motion as amended twice. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Excellent. Excellent. Right ahead of ten thirty. So, um, I think we're sufficiently, uh, close to the delegation time that if the delegation would like to come on up, uh, we have, uh, Paul Vickers, Joanne Hughes, and Diane Booker here to present a, uh, presentation from the, uh, Ontario Federation of Agriculture, the Gray County, uh, Federation. So, uh, ladies and gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Warden and, and counselors. My name's Diane Booker, and I'm the president of the Gray County Federation of Agriculture. Hugh Simpson and I have been around to most of the municipalities and have presented to you. This morning, we're going to, I'm pleased to present with my colleagues, Paul Vicker, who is a zone rep of O F A, which is on the, the Ontario Federation of Agriculture. He's the zone rep for Bruce and Gray County on the board. And Joanne Hughes is the member service rep for Gray County and Bruce County. So just, Gray had a glance. We had, I went, we went over this in our presentation the other day. Just thought another neat um, snapshot would be there's two hundred and fifty-nine farms that sell directly from the farm at stands or you pick your own. And two other facts are thirty-two percent of farm operators in Gray County are female and sixty-nine percent are small farms, less than a hundred thousand dollars in revenue. So I'll turn it over to Paul and Joanne now, and they'll do the O F A part of this presentation.
Okay, thanks, Diane, for, uh, for the introduction. I'd like to say thank you to, uh, Warden Mellon for, uh, allowing us to speak, in front of the county councillor and thank all the county councillors for your, your attention. I know OFA is kind of, uh, you know, made their, their rounds, uh, to all the different municipalities. And I thought to be just trying to clarify where all the different levels go, because there is three different levels of, uh, Ontario Federation of Agriculture. There's the, uh, the county level, which Diane and Hugh have, uh, represented, represented. And then the Ontario Federation of Agriculture, which I represent, and Diane said that, uh, I'm, uh, I'm the rep from, uh, Zone Two. And then Canadian Federation of Agriculture is the, is the national level. So there is a lot of different levels, and sometimes it gets confusing when we're, where we're kind of coming towards you and, and telling you all these, all this different information. I just wanted to try and clarify a bit of, on all the different levels. So, uh, just as a bit of a side note, Keith Curry, who lives just across the, uh, the border in, uh, in Simcoe County, you know, where they're in Collingwood, has just been elected as, uh, president of the Canadian Federation of Agriculture. So, uh, I think that's, uh, that's great that we're having people from up in this area, uh, take those spots at the, at the national level. So just to add a little bit more of what Diane said, you know, agriculture in Ontario is a big thing. I think everybody here realizes how big agriculture is. Uh, the G D P of agriculture in the province of Ontario is, uh, is forty-seven billion dollars. Uh, it represents, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand people at a workforce level, and the, uh, they contribute ten percent of the Ontario, uh, labor force. We export out of Ontario twenty billion dollars worth of, of, uh, products outside of Ontario. So just to kind of give you a little bit more of an idea and, and to go with, uh, with Andrea's, uh, talk about, uh, International Women's Day, thirty-one percent of the farm operators are of, uh, of, are women. So I think that's excellent, and, and we're proud of that. On our own board, seven oh to the eighteen of our director, directors are also, uh, are also women, and we're very proud of those, uh, those, uh, numbers.
So we have the Ontario, um, at, at a glance, but then we've also broken it down to each county federation or each county, sorry. Um, so we do have both of those documents available. You have the Gray at a glance, but there's also the Ontario at a glance. Um, so we do have both of those documents available. You have the gray at a glance, but there's also the Ontario at a glance.
So basically, just a snapshot of of the organization, there's there's thirty-eight thousand farm families that are farm operations in Ontario that. That have OFA as their representative. Uh, we're almost to the thirty-nine thousand. We're just about a hundred short. So that's great that we're we're actually representing more of the agriculture industry all the time. Uh, with OFA. There is two other organization organizations, the Christian Farmers' Federation and the National Farmers' Union. And they represent about twelve percent. Uh, we have, uh, to go along with that, the our PAC committee, which is our our grassroots, uh, members. Who are also members of OFA. Sorry if this gets a little wordy. Uh, we have eighty-eight people on the on the ground level, grassroots level. That then bring up concerns to the to the provincial level, uh, you know. Expressing their concerns and wanting to to. Direct, yeah, yeah, direct the the province of where we're going. Uh, there's fifty-one fifty-one counties in the province. Each county has their own federation. And then we have forty-five experienced staff members representing the 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 interest. And with those with those staff members, I think this is what I really wanted to get to to the point of of to explain to you. That when we have statements made by OFA, they aren't just made up by individuals. They're researched by a well, uh, you know, a large group of of staff members that look into the the matters. And that that find the best solutions of what what is possible. So I think that's really important. Uh, and then our board members, eighteen board members and. And that's, you know, that's that's who I am, sort of thing. I I kind of contribute to board members as being like councillors. And in the staff are the ones that kind of do the heavy lifting. And that are there consistently from year after year after year. And and the board members are the ones that kind of get moved in and out as the as the elections go. So Joanne here herself has been a a member, not a member, has been a a member services rep for nineteen years. And she's just actually moving on to another job here in the in the next coming months with OFA. So. Uh, our staff are key, just like any municipality, so. So our research team, uh, we have, so these are researchers. Researchers and and they all have different areas of of expertise. Should read this. Uh, so Jason Bent is our our director and then Bedlam Fort. I don't know whether many people know Ben. Uh, he looks after the economy and business risk management. Tina Sukuka.
Shankula.
Shankula. Uh, she looks after everything water and rural. So she she would look after some of the rural policies and anything to do with water. Peter Skakanda is, uh, you know, obviously labor broadband and environment. Uh, Danny, she looks after basically animals, anything to do with animal welfare, animal care, trespassing, what even the wildlife issues. Uh, Daniel Sherman, she she's looks after the economic development. Ian Oakes is everything about energy, transportation and waste management. Uh, he's been up in the area a few times, looking at some of the different projects. If you want to to get a natural gas pipeline. Uh, extended Ian's the guy that that knows all the ins and outs of that. Uh, Janice is is about the egg research and and project oversights of all the different areas that we do contribute money to. Uh, that that do that do research. Uh, we do have. Uh, another one that looks after planning, uh, she was Emily Sosa. But she has moved on to the county of brand. So we're looking for a replacement from that. I think Scott Taylor has has given his time. I don't know where Scott is behind me. He's off today, is he? Her and Emily and Scott had conversations about, you know, different planning acts and the. And changes to the official plan, and it's kind of given some of our to our our. Policies moving through. So, uh, you know, we're here just to support the the county federations. Uh, we have sixteen hundred members in in Gray County. Uh, you know, we we have workshops within the county, and we also have workshops that are province-wide. Uh, they seem to be catching on a little bit better since COVID has has hit. Uh, people are getting more used to to doing online presentations. Uh, which we are doing some on succession planning. Yep, the underused housing tax. Uh, which is is getting to be a bit of an issue if if people aren't aren't. Uh, filling out the forms and getting them sent in. So the other thing that we do is as a board, we and as as researchers. Uh, we have, we look about a hundred and twenty different submissions each year from the province of Ontario. Uh, out of those hundred and twenty, fifty of them, we actually make comments on, they do research, make comments on them and and, you know, try and add. Uh, you know, the agriculture perspective at the at the at the basically. Uh, provincial and municipal levels. Uh, some of the ones that we've done and and some of the ones that, uh, you know, a little bit more proud of was obviously we we did one for Bill twenty-three. Uh, if you have time, and I think it's in the package, if you if you want, it's about twenty pages long. But I think it's an excellent submission, talking about the what's what Bill twenty-three, how it affects agriculture. And a lot of the same things that affect agriculture. At provincial level is the same thing that affects counties to to Gray County. So you can see some of the other ones that the other submissions that we did. Uh, we make submissions about energy, obviously, energy is important to to agriculture. Basically, when you think of, when you think of your food. Food is basically carbon, and we're trying to work away from that, but we can't, we can't move away from the the fact that. Our tractors need to need fuel, our barns need heating and cooling all through energy. Uh, fertilizer is is another one. Uh, we made a submission to the federal level at the federal level. Uh, twice last year, one was about fertilizer. Uh, tariff that was that was imposed onto onto basically Ontario and Quebec and eastern Canada. And also the the bill, I can't remember the number of it. But it had to do with the the carbon tax on heat and cooling of of agriculture facilities. We also have had, uh, times that we we had a couple of meetings with Minister Bebo. Uh, talking about these issues and and we're we're happy that we can add the flavor of agriculture. Uh, the one last thing that we did, we even had a meeting with Todd Smith talking about Bill twenty-three. And how it affects rural Ontario altogether. So we we do make comments on quite a few of these. These submissions and and again, they're well researched submissions. And they aren't just people talking off the cuff. Here it is. Here here's the next slide showing that. So we'll let Joanne, she's going to talk about this.
So OFA has created many resources to to assist municipalities, regions and community organizations in support of agriculture sector. Policy areas such as land use planning, property assessment and taxation, financial incentives, community food planning. Uh, and consultation provide a consultation provide many opportunities for communities to support agricultural growth. So we have resources, um, one of which is agriculture matters. It's a guide for municipal. Uh, councillors and staff. Um, this guy provides an overview of issues affecting farmers today and identifies opportunities. For local communities to support this untaped untapped and sometimes undervalued economic sector. Uh, OFA's fifty-one county federation federations offer strong grassroots leadership. And should be your first point of contact when addressing municipal issues affecting agriculture businesses in your community. So we have a guide and checklist to to support agriculture in your municipality. Uh, we have resources to support agriculture economic development and planning. Municipal job job descriptions to support agriculture. Um, working with farmers, a guide to growing solid relationships with farm clients. So there's, um. Many resources that we have. Um, all you have to go do is go to OFA dot O N dot C A. Slash grow egg, um, and you will find all those resources there. And if you have any questions. Um, by all means, contact myself or the local county federation, and they'd be able to guide you in the right direction.
Yeah, and you know, we're we're quite happy that that we've done a lot of work in these areas and and that we have them available for anybody that wants to look at them. Uh, some of the other programs that we have, we have the homegrown program, that's basically farmland preservation. We have over sixty thousand signatures on a on a petition. Uh, supporting our our desire to to try and slow the the rate of sprawl down. Everybody knows the number of. Three hundred and nineteen acres per day is what's lost to of agriculture land is is lost. And and with Bill twenty-three, the we've we've seen a bit more support coming through for our possession about. Uh, you know, trying to build in and up. Uh, it's not only important to 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 limit the amount of agricultural land you use, but also for municipalities to to. Increase the effectiveness of their services, you know, when you start going in and up and using brownfields as opposed to. Going outside the into the agriculture land, you don't have to build any more water lines or sewer lines or roads or sidewalks. And these are the things that we're trying to promote, eh, that we we need that land. And to be honest with you, as a farmer. Land is what you hang on to with, you know, as long as you possibly can. Like, that's the last thing you ever let go, because land is what actually grows everything. Land is what produces those those twenty billion dollars worth of exports that leave Ontario. It produces the the forty-seven billion dollars of GDP that we have in Ontario. It all goes back to land. And if the more we lose of it, it just creates a smaller pool of land that we can that we have available to us. Uh, the six by sixteen was a program we was did we did in in COVID times. And it was just the ability for kids to to get on online and and start cooking with local foods. And and learning them, teaching them how to how to bake and cook at the at the, you know, at the home level as opposed to, you know, just buying food in. Our farmer wellness program is something that's supported by the provincial government. It has to do with mental health. It allows any anybody in the agriculture industry to be able to phone a number and 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 get. Some help from councillors that understand farming. You know, sometimes when you get, just like country people don't always understand town people. Town people don't always understand the problems of of the people in the agriculture sector. So it's one that we're we're happy to be part of. So. So here's the point of questions, uh, you know, my my name, Diane's name and. Joanne's already taken her name off the list. So I guess she's she's looking for for bigger and better opportunities. So. We will have somebody replacing Joanne. So if there's any questions, I just want to say thank you for your time. But if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Or try to.
Well, thank you, Paul and Joanne and Diane. Thank you very much. Uh, I know I've in the past, I've worked with Joanne on different issues and. You've got big shoes to fill there, because Joanne has done a tremendous job over the years. So are there any questions for the delegation? Counselor Eccles.
Thank you, and thank you, Paul and Joanne and Diane. Um, pleasure. Diane was at West Gray Council on Tuesday. The question is, the three hundred and nineteen acres. What does that all include? Does it just include? Housing growth? Or one of the things that certainly in Gray County. Uh, and more so in the southern part of Gray County. Industrial growth. Through gravel pits. Is that part of the inclusion in that or not?
Turn your, Paul, turn your microphone on, please.
There you go. You know, thanks for the question, Kevin, and and through you, the warden. So that three hundred and nineteen acres a day comes from a census. So is is again, it's a number that gets produced through the census report. So we as farmers fill out how many acres. Of corn, you know, wheat, beans, hay, and everything else goes in, and all that number, all those numbers are put together. And then it comes out and in in the last four years. When the the number that they had for agriculture land in twenty sixteen. To twenty twenty, if you do the math backwards, comes out to three hundred and nineteen acres less per day. And where that comes from, to get to your question, is you're you're right. It goes to roads, it goes to hydro corridors. It goes to housing, it goes to industrial parks. I'll be honest with you, some of that, it won't be a big number, but some of that will come from agriculture buildings. You know, every time you build a driving shed or you build a new barn, you've seen some some huge barns being built. All that comes out of the production of land. So I, you know, that's why it's so important that we try and use our land as efficiently as possible. We realize that we can't ask people to stop building homes. That they need places to live. We just want you to do it in a way that uses at least amount of land as possible. So if you can build in and up. That's way better than just building houses all around. And it seems like there are builders, to be honest, want to build the stick houses. You know, I would love to see more at least five-story buildings and apartment complexes or condominiums. There's many parents that want their kids out of their house. Somewhere, and there's many kids that want to get out of their parents' house. And if we keep building them eight, nine hundred thousand dollar houses, it doesn't work. But if you can get them into into apartment style, whether they're condos or. Or apartments, it gives them a spot to live. And you think of the carbon footprint, how much less it is on those buildings also, like any. Any apartment building I've ever been into, the people on the fifth floor never had to turn a heater on. There seemed to be enough heat coming up through the bottom one. So. Then you you look at it, land use, carbon use, a lot of different ways makes sense. I I watch the news so often and and watch what's happening over in Ukraine. And you don't see a lot of sprawl. I don't know whether it's just the pictures I don't see or what it is, but you look at the places that are unfortunately getting bombed. They're all those five-story rectangular buildings. They're probably as dull as dull gets, but man, they're efficient to house people.
Any other questions? Oh. Count, uh, C L Winberg.
Um, thank you for your presentation, and I just wanted to, um. Note that on March thirtieth, I understand that there's a farmer wellness initiative that in being held in Guelph. And, um, certainly through our paramedics, Rick Tremblay, one of our medics, is going to attend on behalf of the county, but. It looks like a wonderful event. It was brought to our attention through Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, and they were part of the support for that. But I wanted to say thank you to the OFA for all of the work that you've done in that part. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim, and, uh. That's right, that's right. Um, you know, and but it's it's important. I'm glad that the county is is picking up on that and and having people to be able to attend. To be honest with you, I I feel OFA and and municipal politics really work together well, and and we're actually looking for the same. Goals and in the same needs and wants as is what the county's trying to provide. So. You know, better roads, better infrastructure, better mental health, all those things are important to OFA, and they're important to the county and to all of you. So hopefully you don't ever look at us as the opposition, that you look at us as comrades as much as anything. And that's why you're seeing us showing up at at Roma and and Good Roads and AMO. You know, we're there to to answer questions. If people don't understand or want to learn more about OFA, we want to answer those questions. So, thank you.
Any others? Counselor Greg.
Thanks, Warden Mellon. And just being that you've kind of touched on some provincial context here, more. More so than just local, this question is. If you use like just north of the highway seven or or Airport Road, these peripheral areas in Toronto, one of the greatest challenges I've thought is. You can't blame the generational farmer who is sitting on a gold mine of wealth. On properties that are just adjacent to what's been developed. But how do we protect? Those agricultural lands for these individuals that may now be in their sixty-seventies. Some cases eighties, and they're looking just to retire for a few years and and move on. Are there challenges the OFA is seeing in, um. Passing these lands off within families or or in terms of succession? Um, or financially, is is this something that is just because I couldn't even guess the value of per acre of these properties now? Um, is it just financially something that is too much? For young farmers to handle? It it's an area where we have some of our best farmland. Some of its greenbelt protected. But still. It's hard to place blame on the farmer. For wanting to. Fairly retire, just like anyone else would. But unfortunately, in this case, they're sitting on land that we're all wanting to protect.
Yep, thank you for the question, Scott, and and through the mayor. You're exactly right. You can't you can't blame anybody for wanting to, you know, to cash in the in the. The chip, right? Like, you know, they've put up with the traffic for years and years and years. Like, you know, they almost deserve a little bit of a reward. Uh, the biggest thing is is just to try and slow down the sprawl. And you know, and I I know this isn't maybe, you know, county sort of a sort of an issue, but, you know, the the four thirteen. Like, when it goes through, and I'm pretty sure it's going to go through, it's going to take up a lot of farmland. And and then I look at the four oh seven. And it's like, well, there's a road that doesn't get used a whole lot. It's it's basically parallel, just a little bit further south. And and I think. And uh and I think, didn't we build that road? And didn't we own that road at one time? And now we don't own it. It's in private hands. Uh it's a toll road. I won't take it unless I'm completely desperate, uh because I'm just too cheap to to fork over the money. But now we're building a whole new infrastructure of the four thirteen, and it's it's those kind of decisions uh that are the hard ones to make. Uh you know, whatever happened years before, I don't know, uh to be honest with you. But just like development now, you know, it's up to it's up to one's talents, it's up to me for it, it's up to the other municipalities to to make the hard decisions because. I know as a as a former councillor, that it's not easy getting people to buy into this. Uh to bring the density and intensity into back into the urban centres. People don't seem to want it and uh but what? What else do you do? There isn't another answer. There's no more land being developed nor or being made. If you don't use the land that you have as efficiently as possibly as you can, then you're you're wasting it. And uh and you know, one acre lots for for, you know, single homes is not the answer. But when you can, when you can start getting that density up to, you know, a hundred units per hectare, like that's at least, that's a lot better. Every acre saved. Is an acre saved. So don't feel like, I I I know in my head that I'll ne- we'll never see that number get down from three hundred and nineteen down to zero. But can we, can we slow it from three nineteen down to two fifty? That would be in the next four years. That would be a win, in my opinion, and it's it's the county, it's the planters that have the ability to to force the uh the density up. And inside the uh in on the browns, on the brown land and on the in the inside the urban settings. We have enough land to build houses on it. I'm probably getting a little speechy here now, but. We 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 have enough land inside our urban dwellings right now. We don't need to to do sprawl further out into the into the greenfield. So that's all I can suggest. Just. Do your best, right? As as councillors, as as staff, as planners, just try and do the best to make the best decision possible as you can.
Okay, I'm gonna take one more question from Councillor Bordenial.
Thank you, thank you, Paul. You you said something really refreshing earlier. When we deal with um NIMBYism in our municipality, let's, I'm just gonna put municipal hat on for one second. They always lean to when we talk about going to a three-story or four-story, they always say, well, you know, in our area, we're rural agriculture, the farmers don't want that. It changes the landscape. And what you said was very refreshing. You'd rather go up than go out. We've we've been having that argument. So it's nice to see an organization, uh you know, such as the OFA. Behind that, you know, and and I think that speaking at uh pu- public um. Public information sessions at the at the local level would go a long way for the people to say, oh, well, you know what? The farmers really don't want that. Well, in essence, you do, because we'll say it will save farmland. Like, my dad's old farm is now a subdivision, but. Yeah, it would be nicer if you could fit going up a little bit, and then it would, the density you get in the smaller footprint would save that acreage. So I I I found that really refreshing, and you know, maybe in the future, we look to bring at the local level, just to to get that point of view across to some of the people that. Argue, use you as an argument point, even though it's against the philosophy of what you just said.
It is figured out yet. Yeah, and and I thank you for your comments and and through uh through uh the warden. Yeah, and it's 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 tough for OFA to be everywhere, so it's easier for me to come and talk to, uh was it nine, nine uh? Nine uh municipalities. So this is part of our deal. This is how we kind of have to, you know, kind of fight it in the trenches. We can't. We can't be at every public meeting, and there's been a couple of public meetings in the town of Blue Mountains I've been aware of, but it's. It's hard to get to them all, and this is why we're trying to, you know, educate you at this level. So. Um and just just one more quick thing, I put a plug in for the the politicians meeting on March twenty-fifth that uh is at the Katy Arena. Uh this year, so don't go to Elmwood. Don't get confused. It's in it's in Katy. We had to move it, and uh we're hoping to see everybody there and uh. And uh and bring your fellow councillors. Uh we'll talk about a lot of the same things. It'll be repetitive for for some of uh the the mayors and deputy mayors, but. The councillors will at least be able to hear it also.
And make sure you contact Jackie Pannings if you're going, because she has to book the food. And if she doesn't know you're coming, there won't be enough food. So, very important.
Well, I have to say it would probably be the first OFA event without enough food, because there's always tons of food at those events. So anyway, thank you, Paul, Joanne, and Diane. Thank you very much for your presentation and the answers. It's been most informative, and we dearly appreciate the work that you folks do. Thank you.
And and again, thank you, Brian. You gave us a lot of time today, and I appreciate that. I know we went well over our ten minutes, but hopefully you found it worth it. So.
Absolutely. It's always worth it. So moving on, uh. It is uh eleven o'clock. Does anyone require a break or, yeah, well, let's take uh, let's take ten minutes. We'll be back at five after eleven. With recess.
One minute warning. Hey, County Council, we'll bring the meeting back to order. We are on item number seven, items for direction of discussion, seven A is the report on governance follow-up from the clerk's department. I will turn the floor over to Clerk Tara. Clearly in it, we need a mover and seconders. Can you remind me even promote there? Counselor Carlton and Counselor Nielsen? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Good morning, County Council. This report comes before you today as a result of direction from the prior council to bring forward a report on certain governance topics that tend to come up over the course of a council term. So the intention was that should there be a change or an improvement that is to be made that this would give the incoming and the new council yourselves sufficient opportunity to think and consider about some of the improvements or anything that you'd like to see more information on or consider changing. So the report discusses weighted voting, council composition, direct and indirect election, term of the Gray County Warden, use of wards, meaning structure and use of the public commenting or public question periods. The first topic is that related to weighted voting. So weighted voting was established by the County of Gray Act nineteen ninety-three and is used when a member requests a recorded vote. The votes are allocated based on your number of electors present in your local municipalities, and they're split evenly between the mayor and deputy mayor with any extra votes going toward the mayor. Across other upper-tier governments, the recorded vote practice does vary. It's primarily based on electors, but some municipalities choose to only utilize it during financial votes, or some municipalities don't have weighted votes at all. So it really depends on what municipalities preferences and practice across the province. Should there be a desired, a desire to make a change to weighted voting, there would be notice required as well as a triple majority required and a public meeting in order to make any changes related to weighted voting. The municipal act also outlines restrictions around timing on such change. So any decision that was made, if it was made prior to January first of twenty twenty-six, the change would not, would be implemented following the twenty twenty-six election, once that new council is organized. In terms of council composition, currently Gray County Council is made up of eighteen indirectly elected members, who are the mayors and deputy mayors from the nine local municipalities in Gray County. There are various options for council composition that are noted in municipal act, as well as they're listed in the report for your reference as well. Should there be a change desired in relation to council composition? Notice would be required as well as a triple majority and a public meeting. And similar to weighted votes, if the decision was made prior to January first twenty twenty-six, that change could be implemented with, when the new council is organized following the twenty twenty-six election. Direct and indirect election. Currently, Gray County Council is elected indirectly based on your election to your local municipal offices as mayors and deputy mayors. And the Gray County Warden is indirectly elected as well by this group annually at the inaugural meeting. The question of electors directly electing the warden was put to the local municipalities in twenty seventeen. However, the triple majority that was required to make this change was not attained, so no changes were made prior to the twenty eighteen election. Should there be a change desired regarding council composition? The notice would be required as well as a triple majority and the public meeting would also be required. If the decision were made prior to January one twenty twenty-six, the change could take effect following the municipal election in twenty twenty-six, when the new council is organized. The term of the warden, the current term of the Gray County Ward is one year. There has been discussion over the years about possibly extending this term to two years. However, any recommendations that have come forward have not been supported to make the change to two years. Across the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, the term of the warden does vary from one year to two years, and then a couple, one or two municipalities have a four-year term for their warden. Should that be desired to be changed, notice would be required. As well, there would be a public meeting, but no triple majority would be needed. And if a bylaw were to be passed prior to January first twenty twenty-six, that change could take effect with the next term of council after the new council is organized. On the subject of wards, the municipal act does authorize a municipality to divide or re-divide the municipality into wards or to dissolve existing wards. Word boundary changes can also be brought forward by electors and municipality through petition. In Wellington County, you've seen your report, a map that shows Wellington County and how they divide their municipalities. There are seven local municipalities and then nine distinct word boundaries. So they have a council of sixteen with seven local members and then nine board councillors as well. They're the only ones that I'm aware of that actually, in terms of an upper-tier government that have a ward system in their, in their county. So should wards want to be explored further with this council or a future council, staff would recommend allocating budget funds to an external resource to consider how to establish ward boundaries, because it's there's a lot of time and resources that would need to be dedicated to that process. Should that change be desired to take place, a public meeting is actually not required, though it would be very recommended that we would undertake an extensive public engagement process to establish wards. A triple majority would also not be required. In terms of meeting structure, prior to the change to the committee of the whole structure in twenty seventeen, there were standing committees. There are four of them, corporate services, social services, planning and community development and transportation and public safety. They typically met one or two times a month, and there were nine or ten members on each committee, and the warden sat on each committee. So each municipality was represented. The minutes would proceed to County Council for endorsement and ratifications of any recommendations that those standing committees made. And then in twenty seventeen, the committee of the whole pilot project commenced for a period of six months, and then the decision was made to continue with the committee of the whole system going forward. There has been some discussion over the years about going back to that standing committee system, but there has never to date been enough support to, to move back to the standing committee system. Should the, the change, if it, if council wanted to make that change, we don't have any municipal act considerations in terms of timing, but we would need to make a change to our procedural bylaw and have roughly six months' time to, to develop that structure and, and implement it accordingly. And there would probably be recommendations that would, it would look different than I think than it did in the past, and we'd have some different membership and different departments reporting to different committees than, than was proposed in the past. And lastly, we have the public comment or question period. Gray County currently does not have this in our procedural bylaw, but we do have a delegation request process where anyone that wishes to attend County Council or present or ask a question of council can contact the clerk's department and schedule a delegation. And then that provides appropriate notice on the agenda that that topic will be discussed at a future meeting. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Any questions from County Council, discussion? Lots of information there, Counselor Echols.
Just a quick question, Tara, could you give a description of what the triple majority, how that breaks down and works?
Yes, and I apologize, I should have said that right off the park. So a triple majority is a majority of all votes on the upper-tier council around this table. A majority of all lower-tier councils that have passed resolutions consenting to the change. So you need five municipalities consenting to a change, and then the total number of electors in the lower-tier municipalities that have passed resolutions consenting to the bylaw will form a majority of the electors in all of Gray County.
And I just wonder the majority of votes here, would that, or would a, would a weighted vote be allowed in that situation, or was it just a simple majority?
Very good question. I think I'd have to look at that a little further, but I think it would be a majority of like a single vote around the table.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions? Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Thanks for your report, Tara. Very comprehensive, and I'm glad the question was asked about the triple majority, because they've always been a little bit confused by that, and still probably am. Where are we currently at? We have the, the two committees, correct? Like you, you talk about moving towards that, that if we're going back to the committee structure, I was under the belief that we have already made that decision to go to the two, two committees. Is that accurate?
Sorry, do you mean council and committee of the whole? As to, or what, which two committees?
So we have the, what are the name of the two committees that we have? I'm looking to Madam C A O. I thought they were already struck in our terms, and we have a terms of reference for the two standing committees already that you referenced in your report. So I was wondering, does County Council need to do something else to forward the work of those two committees, or are they already established?
Sorry, thank you for the clarification. No, currently County Council doesn't have to pursue anything or change its practices in any way. This report is for information only, so Committee of Management currently, they meet every other month, and they make recommendations to County Council, and then those minutes and any recommendations come forward to this table to be, to be ratified. No further process changes are, are required with regard to the, the committees that we have that meet on a regular basis.
Yeah, so Committee of Management, Community Services Committee is the one that, that we moved forward with this year, which I think kind of takes the place of the, the one that was in earlier times. I think that what we've tried to do in response to issues or strategic initiatives that, that councils expressed a direction to staff to move forward with is where it was appropriate, we've struck task forces to deal with things. And so then you've got a very focused and, and time-limited approach to something, but we do, we have the two, I guess you can call them standing committees then, one for long-term care operations and the other one for all the community services type work. And the other things like the roads task force, or in the last term of council, things like the Hannover Own Sound or Mental Health and Addictions Task Force came, were struck to deal with specific issues or initiatives, and then when those were deemed to be complete, the task forces wrapped up. And when we move on from there.
So Madam Clerk, it would probably be fair to say that if there was interest in changing any of these, that a notice and motion would be in order to bring forward whatever change was desired, and then the wholesome debate would take place and the result would be conveyed to the clerk's department. Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Our Community Services Committee met last week, and you know, it was a very good meeting, and it certainly provided, at least from my perspective, it provided you know, all the council members a good opportunity to dig a little bit deeper and find out actually what's going on. We had really good discussions around homelessness programs and around childcare, but through that committee, we're, you know, we took the time, and we already established that we think we're going to need more time to actually, you know, because you know, the scope is pretty, pretty broad. Sitting when we had the four standing committees, I really enjoyed the opportunity to be able to, to learn more about you know, the specific committees we sat on, whether it be, you know, transportation, whether it was social services, whether it was planning. I, from a, a staff perspective, I certainly understand the, the amount of time it takes to run the four different committees. But I think having the two standing committees is certainly something that we should look at moving forward, you know, as quickly as we can, because I do believe there's merit in having good representation from across the, the council members here to be able to ask those questions and be able to speak to the issues, you know, at County Council when they arrive, knowing that there's been a deeper dive into it over the last, you know, four years, and this is no disrespect to, to anyone. Sometimes, you know, I feel that we're not getting as much conversation about some of them, because we're time, time limited sitting in County Council. And sometimes you don't want to be the one asking too many questions, because everyone else is looking at their watch. But you know, when we have the opportunity in committee, you just felt like you had the opportunity to ask the questions that should be asked. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Mackey, and you're spot on there. I've often felt that as well in the past. Okay, Counselor Echols.
Thank you. The Standing Committee on Long-Term Care. Is that the proper wording or description of that? Because it's a mandated committee, it's not necessarily a standing committee. So I guess truly we only have one committee, because we used to have long-term care and housing, da, 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 as a standing committee. Then you also have off to the side of it, the Long-Term Care Committee, which is on through the municipal act, and you can see the Long-Term Care Act, that the county, whoever has a long-term care, shall have a specific standing committee, or it's committee to, yeah, get rid of the standing, a committee for that, very similar at the lower tier. You, you shall have, if you have a police, police services, you shall have a board or a commission out here. Correct? So long-term, yeah, is a mandated committee. So I think we, truly, we only have one social and the other one. Just for clarification, that's not really a standing committee, Counselor Mackey.
We just add further to Counselor Echols' comments, we typically, we, the ones that we do have, we refer to them as, as subcommittees, they're not necessarily a task force, and that their time is limited, but they are a, a committee that reports to either Committee of the Whole or County Council. And as you say, long-term care, committee management is mandated by the Long-Term Care Act, and it requires that there is a board, a governance board to take that function.
Tara, the, the, the planning part of economic development also is a requirement.
Thank you. Yes, the Planning Act does require that an upper-tier municipality with planning responsibilities shall have a planning advisory committee, so that function has been, will be satisfied when we, when we bring forward the membership for that planning and economic development advisory committee. That's another mandated one as well.
Okay. All those in favor? I was carried. Thank you, Tara. Next item is the Community Improvement Plan Update, and Savannah is going to bring that report forward. So welcome, Savannah.
Thank you very much, County Council. Do I need a mover and seconder before I can go? Yeah.
Okay. Yes, you do, but normally it's the clerk that reminds me, but that was good. Because she was just about to do that. I, actually, I was just about to ask for a mover and seconder. Counselor Boarder, Counselor DeBreen will second. All right, Savannah, thank you very much. We'll talk later.
Sounds good. Thank you very much, Warden and Council. Really pleased to be able to talk about the C I P report from twenty twenty-two and the report cards that came back from each of your member municipalities on the results that we've had to date. As you know, the C I P program launched in two thousand and nineteen after much consultation with all of our member municipalities and developers and business community. It was built with and for our municipality as a tool to grow the assessment base and to assist in becoming more investment-ready. The program is meant to enable and boost development that wouldn't otherwise necessarily happen and right on the ground, because that is where investment happens in each of your communities. Financial support is provided to local municipalities to assist with the various incentives adopted through local C I Ps. So the county developed a program, and then each local municipality identified and adopted their own C I P. So eight of nine municipalities have them adopted, and the last one will be adopted this year, which is really exciting. So the financial commitments range anywhere from the twenty thousand dollars per year in cash contribution that came from the county. So included in the twenty twenty-three budget was our final year of that contribution, as per the program outlined right now. There are other incentives, including participating in tax incentives, providing surplus land, reducing or waiving application fees, development charges, and those are the types of incentive menu that we put forward and adopted, council. So to date, council has approved two different tax incentives at this table. All of the other incentives are approved locally. Anything to do with taxes where county is participating needs to come forward to this table. So that is what happened so far to date, and the next meeting, actually, we're going to be bringing forward the agreement and bylaw for the first tax increment equivalent grant with the town of Hannover. So that one is actually exactly what Paul was talking about today. It is two six-story, seventy-one-unit multi-residential attainable housing builds in the town of Hannover, which will bring forward some much-needed housing in our communities. So it's through the introduction of the T E G, that's what we call the Tax Increment Equivalent Grant, because it's a really long name to call it every time, so the T E G. It really illustrates the acceleration of investment in the figures that you see in the report here. So that is phasing a net new assessment, incrementally introducing that assessment to the rule, allowing the developer to reach the full property taxes payable up to a period of ten years. So this is important because it strategically reduces upfront costs for the developers, allowing those savings to be passed on, and that's part of what is helping us create that attainable housing. So for municipalities in the county, T E G really helps to tip the scales when a priority development might not otherwise happen. So some results to date, really exciting results to share with you. So as I said, eight of our nine member municipalities have their C I Ps in place. The C I Ps launched in twenty nineteen, so just prior to the pandemic, and as you can imagine, there was very little investment made through that program during the pandemic. But coming out of the pandemic, we have seen a real rise in investment, and that's really exciting for us. So last year, I brought forward a report that talked about eighty-nine grants that were issued with public funds of five hundred and forty-seven thousand, private investment of one point six nine million, for combined public-private investment of two point two four one million dollars. Twenty twenty-two, we have forty-seven grants issued, public funds of two point one million, private fund invested twenty point two one nine million dollars across the county. So congratulations, that's a huge figure. That total public-private investment is just over twenty-two million dollars in twenty twenty-two. So future considerations on what we're asking you today, this was intended and, and approved as a five-year program, so it started in two thousand and nineteen, it was meant to end this year. But given the pandemic, we lost approximately two years of planning and implementation. So given this unforeseen delay, staff would recommend the council considers extending the December thirty-one twenty twenty-three deadline for our municipalities to spend those cash contributions and to participate in the program for another two years to account for those C I P lost years through the pandemic. With council's endorsement of the twenty twenty-three budget, each municipality will have received the full cash contribution of the one hundred thousand dollars over the five-year program. So for those who have not yet fully implemented those programs, all of those funds are being held locally in your reserves earmarked for this program specifically. So the intent has been to offer targeted incentives county-wide through the adoption of the local C I Ps within within settlement areas and rural areas. So this covers all of Gray County, and that was a stipulation of the program, I think the only stipulation we put on the program. But given the investments that resulting, staff would like to consult with our member municipalities about what it may look like to extend or amend the C I P going forward. Given the results that we're starting to see, we really think that it's working, and we would like the opportunity to speak with your municipalities and developers and businesses to see what it might look like to come back to this table with a future report and an amended C I P program going forward. So those are the two asks we have today. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Savannah. Are there any questions? Not seeing any questions. You've done a really good job, like always, Savannah. Thank you very much. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. We have, Council, we have two matters to deal with in closed session, so I would propose in motion the Committee of the Whole does now go into closed session pursuant to section two three nine of the Municipal Act as amended to discuss one litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local boards, but specifically Eden Oak Trails Head at the O L T. And two, the security of the property of the municipality or local board, and specifically a cybersecurity update. Would someone care to move Counselor McQueen, seconded by Counselor Mattressovs? All those in favor? That is carried. So we will, thank you, Rob. We're now back online. I can report coming out of closed session that we discussed only those matters listed on the in-camera session motion, and we gave, or we provided direction to staff on a matter in closed session. Is there any other business coming before this meeting? Counselor Boddy?
Thank you, Warden Millen. Something that just popped into my head coming out of Tara's report a little bit earlier. Back in the old days before COVID, we used to try and get Bruce and Gray County councils together for a meeting on a Saturday to discuss that. Any possibility of doing that again? I'll leave it with you.
There's always a possibility. The likelihood is another matter, but possibility exists, and I'll, I'll explore that with Bruce County. Thank you. Okay, no other business? Any notices of motion? Seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn. Counselor Mattressovs and Counselor Patterson, all those in favor? That is carried. We stand adjourned. I don't know where my, oh, there it is. We're adjourned.